Accurate notice for the seat for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Crestor Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place to meet. Please rise to the plaid of the conference.
The flag of the United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so number two on the list is the proclamation to the Friends of the Library. Where's Mary Samson?
Lori, are you here representing the library tonight or no? Is Rebecca here?
Come on down here. Okay, whereas the Friends of Ocean County Library, Lacy Branch raised money that enabled our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much needed equipment, support for the children's summer reading, and special events through the year. Whereas the work of Friends highlights an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of life, learning, and connect with the thoughts and the ideas of the others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print, electronic materials, along with the expert assistance research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift of the time and their commitment to the library sets an example for all and how for all and how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And now therefore agree resolved that I Timothy McDonald, Mayor of Lacy Township, proclaim October twentieth through the twenty-sixth as Friends of Libraries Week in Lacy Township, Ocean County State of New Jersey, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and to thank them for all they do to make the library community so much better.
Thank you for telling me.
Who's taking it?
The dog.
Yes, Ole is taking it.
Alright.
Mrs. Trans, did you want to say anything or no? Mrs. Trans and I go back a very long way. We go back a very long way. Long time.
I'll say a couple of words. My name is Lori Samson. I'm their circulation supervisor at the Lacy Library. And the Friends of the Lacy Library have been around for a long time. They've been around since nineteen seventy-four. And they do a lot of fundraising and promoting of different programs for the library. And they really do a lot. One thing they have coming up is a bus trip to the New York Public Library. It'll be on November fourth. And it's only fifty dollars. It's a really good day. If you're interested in joining the Friends, it's only a ten dollar fee for a lifetime membership. And as I said, the Friends do quite a bit for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Friends runs a lot of programs that you see at the library with children, young adults, handicapped, and concerts. We had a concert last week. So there are many different activities that the Friends of the Lacy Library Group sponsors.
Thank you very much for the word.
Just to say, Mrs. Trans is my kindergarten teacher.
Hank Stevens.
Mine's, yeah, mine too.
And just for the record, I guess last week I was appointed as the one of the library commissioners for the Ocean County. So the library is near and dear to me, so. Okay, proclamation, oh, you did that?
Just a little bit, we're gonna do the first resolution first, and then Chief DeBella will step up and have a few words to say. And if you adopt the resolution, we'll go through with our oath of offices for the new officers this evening.
Okay.
So first, we're gonna do Resolution two nineteen dash seventy-four. Resolution attached at Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Bruce Carver Jr. as a full-time police officer with the township of Lacy. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Chief?
Thank you, John. Welcome everybody here this evening. I'm very honored to be standing here in the process of hiring three new police officers for our department. So I have to thank our governing body for their support for these new hires. Again, I'd like to thank all the Friends, family, coworkers that are here to support these three. Call off all three officers. If I can get Bruce Carver, Anthony Rivallo, and Dallas Gannon to step forward, please. Bruce, if you can stand to my right, and Anthony and Dallas, if you can stand over there next to Catherine Gannon. Bruce Carver, grew up in South Tombs River, graduated from the South Tombs River High School in two thousand and ten. Began attending Ocean County College, and in two thousand and twelve, he switched to Stockton University. He graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice. Around two thousand and sixteen, he got hired by Point Pleasant Beach Police Department where he went to Police Academy for them. He worked as a Class Two Special Officer for them. And then in two thousand and seventeen, he was hired as a full-time sworn police officer for the South Tombs River Police Department, where he has remained for the last two years, up until, I think, probably yesterday. While he was in the South Tombs River Police Department, he was very heavily involved in their Neighborhood Watch Program. He was a very proactive police officer, especially when it came to narcotics enforcement. He does reside in Lacy Township with his fiancee, Jessica. Very proud to bring you aboard the Lacy Police Department, and I wish you the best of luck. Congratulations. Thank you.
I, Bruce Carver Jr.
I, Bruce Carver Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Next, we'll move on to the second resolution. It will be Resolution two seventy-five, the Resolution of Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Anthony Rivallo as a full-time police officer with the township of Lacy. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Chief?
Anthony grew up in Beechwood, graduated from the South Tombs River High School in two thousand and twelve. Thereafter, he attended Ocean County College and Fairleigh Dickerson University, where he continues to work on his criminal justice degree. In two thousand and fourteen, was also hired by the Seaside Police Department. He worked there as a Class One and a Class Two Special Police Officer. Two thousand and seventeen, he also was hired by the South Tombs River Police Department, initially as a Class Two Special Officer and then as a full-time police officer. He as well was very heavily involved in the Neighborhood Watch Program. He is a firearm instructor and also a member of the Ocean County Regional SWAT team. And he resides also in Lacy Township with his wife Miranda. I think they have a six-month-old baby. And again, also with the four of you working in the police department, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Okay, I, Anthony Rivallo.
I, Anthony Rivallo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
And the final resolution is Resolution two seventy-six, the Resolution of Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Dallas Gannon as a full-time police officer with the township of Lacy. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Chief?
Dallas, lifelong resident here in Lacy Township, graduated from Lacy Township High School in two thousand and eight. I understand he lettered in both basketball and baseball. After graduating from high school, he went to Carolina University, where he spent four years of receiving a Bachelor of Arts degree in business administration. That was close to Carolina University. In two thousand and fifteen, he was hired by the Seaside Heights Police Department, initially as a Class One Special Officer, and then as a Class Two Special Officer. I'd like to note, when Dallas attended the Ocean County Police Academy for Seaside Heights, he scored extremely high in the final test for physical fitness. The total amount of points that you can get on that final test is five hundred, and Dallas scored four hundred and eighty-eight, just not ever being a perfect score. So that alone is something to really be proud of, four hundred and eighty-eight points out of five hundred. Two thousand and seventeen, last couple of years, Dallas has worked for the Ocean County Sheriff's Department. I'm right here. And initially, he was worked as an investigator for the sheriff, and then more recently as a sheriff's office, sheriff's office. Worked in some various units, but I think the one he probably liked the most was the marine unit, where he got to go out on a wave runner or a boat. But, which we don't have that here in Lacy Township, so I guess I'll have to figure something else that's accessible. For Dallas, but he also resides here in Lacy Township. Very happy to have him on the department now. Also wish him the best of luck to regulate Lacy's Dallas.
Lori's joining us this evening.
That's my niece, really, and that's my brother-in-law, Mike.
So let me ask you a question before we swear in. So did you go to Kehu Park Camp Counselors when you were a young man?
I probably did.
Yeah, the guy was your camp counselor, actually. Thank you very much. Who wants to hold the Bible? Do you want to hold this? Alright, are we gonna be able to accomplish this? She has to hold that, you need to put your left hand on it. So the other person will be doing this over again. I, Dallas Gannon.
I, Dallas Gannon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Under the authority of the peoples to help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
No, just to all three officers, welcome to Lacy Police Force and best of luck.
Mr. Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. Saying basically, welcome, guys. You're coming into the, as I said before, probably the best police force in New Jersey, I think, no doubt. The best officers. When I always see this, and I say it all the time, see all this blue, sooner or later, I think it'll wrap right around this whole room, huh? As we grow. No, thank you very much, and good luck, guys, really. Thanks. And we're here for you. Anytime you need anything, just ask. Or you can ask that gentleman right there. He'll reach out to somebody.
Chairman Dykoff?
The camaraderie amazes me. Where else could you hire people and their new fellow employees come out to celebrate your hiring? South Tombs River and Ocean County Sheriff's Department, their loss is our gain. Just really impressed with the caliber of officers that we've been able to acquire from other municipalities and throughout the state. So, welcome to the Lacy Township. I'm glad you all live here. I'm glad we have a lifelong resident. That's great, but good luck. Great department, thank you very much.
Chairman Cortolo?
I'm gonna start my comments by saying officially, I think the mayor should purchase a wave runner and have a marine unit for Dallas.
By the way, he's running for reelection.
Had enough of him to make it out after executive. The mayor's a lot bigger than I am. But what I would say to the three new officers is you come to us experienced, you come to us trained. But I've been up here for six years. I've been fortunate enough to be chosen by the people for six years, and I will tell you, there's a lot of the police force that I know personally. And I know them and I trust them. And for the new gentlemen that were hired tonight, your chief, your captain, your lieutenant, your sergeant, right down the line, there's so much experience. There's SWAT experience, there's military experience. And when I was new many years ago, I kept my mouth shut and my ears open. And that's the way I approach conversations still when I talk to these gentlemen. And I learn something every time I talk with them. I feel safe with all of you gentlemen here, and I wish you, new gentlemen, I hope, like I say with all our new police officers, that God walks with you every step. Thank you, and God bless you for keeping our houses safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to welcome you aboard to, as Chairman Giuliano says, the finest police force in the state of New Jersey. And I mean it, I know he means it, and so does the rest of the committee members. The experience on this police force is amazing. You guys are going on an awful lot. And as Community Director Cortolo said, keep your mouth shut and your ears open, and you're gonna learn, you're gonna be, you're gonna rise to the ranks. There's no doubt in my mind as we go forward. So, welcome aboard, and good luck to you. Alright, what we'll do now is we'll take a. Alright, motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if anybody would like to leave, now's your chance before we jump into our next agenda.
It's good seeing you, Chris. Thank you. It's good seeing you, guys.
You can, yeah.
Talk to you tomorrow, Mike.
Hi, Chief. Yep.
Mike. You his camp counselor?
Dallas is, yeah.
Did you know there was three Ocean County?
In the clerk's office and a little office within the clerk's office.
I took a few, I took everything out of it. You know what? It's good for skin, it's good for.
I know, I'm very bad at drinking.
No, it's three SUV, Ocean County SUVs.
Yeah, the only reason.
Eleven. Eleven, ten AM.
Like how many dollars is it now?
The only reason I care is because that's one of my four friends. Well, three to my best friend. Three, I'd like, I don't know, I'd like, I don't know. Yeah, I was gonna text you, I forgot it's a drinker.
It's good seeing you, my friend.
Good night.
No, I don't, it might have been when I first moved here in ninety-eight.
You got buzzed.
Oh, I thought it was from the insurance.
No, it's buzzed.
I didn't get in trouble. No, I wouldn't. I don't like seeing my clothes, I'm sick and ready to try.
I don't like to do his shirts, you know, so I can take his shirt off.
They did a good job.
He's used to it after seeing in a police uniform, and it doesn't bother him to take it. He doesn't. No, I think it's, I think it's the day before the election.
Yeah, it's November fourth.
Is it November fourth?
Hey, Tom. How you doing, man?
So you don't want to meet tomorrow if Linda's not available?
Yeah.
She's not available.
She's not coming.
Word, really?
No, she's not available. She has, she's off tomorrow, she has things on her.
You're recording.
Okay, so now, yeah, read that.
Accurate notice for the season's meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Crestor Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place to meet. Please rise to the plaid of the leaders and a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask for someone to close that door in the back, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay, second reading, two nineteen dash sixteen, amending chapter one seventy-eight of the municipal code creating short-term rentals.
In ordinance of Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, creating Article Two and Chapter two seventy-eight of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy, which shall be entitled Short-Term Rental Regulations. This is related to the short-term rental regulations. The article aims to curtail and in certain circumstances prohibit the increasingly widespread practice of renting or leasing various types of dwellings or segments thereof located primarily in residential neighborhoods on a short-term basis to transient guests. This practice has been popularized and facilitated by various websites that advertise and broker these rentals. Left unregulated, this practice will transform many residential dwellings into flop houses to the detriment of the health, safety, and quiet enjoyment of the affected neighborhoods. This article does not apply to lawfully established and operating hotels, motels, rooming houses, boarding houses, or bed and breakfast establishments. What it basically says is no dwelling or segment thereof may be rented or leased for a term of less than thirty days. There are other items throughout the ordinance. I did post them on the website, so most of you have seen them. This is second reading. We need to open the floor to public comment.
Open the floor to public comment. Do we have any? This lady right here.
Hello, my name is Marjorie Cass.
And your address, please?
Ten eleven Painter Point, Lenoka Harbor, where you can stay for seventy-five dollars a night and sixty dollars after Labor Day. I have been privileged to be running a small business out of my home for the past three years. Until right now, I don't believe any of my neighbors know about it. It is a small business that is part of the backbone of the American way. A small business that brings in revenue for this town. My guests eat, play, shop, and unbeknownst to them, have helped me pay for college. My guests come from all over the world. I have had people here from Germany, Ireland, England, Canada, Australia, Florida, Maryland, North Carolina, Tennessee, Pennsylvania. But the people I really want you to hear about are the people who write things like the following. I am originally from Bayville, New Jersey. I have been living in South Carolina twelve years now. I am coming Thanksgiving weekend to visit my brother and nephews. I haven't seen them in six years. And this one. How far from Lake Barnegat Drive in Lenoka Harbor are you? We're going to spend time with family and don't want to drive more than needed. How about this? Hi, my wife and I are excited about your chalet. We both grew up in New Jersey and haven't been down the shore, just the two of us, forever. They come for family reunions, graduations, weddings, holidays, and even to visit sick parents in nursing homes. Some of the reviews for my space sound like this. Thank you for my weekend paradise. As a teacher, I needed a relaxing weekend getaway. That is exactly what I got. And this was the perfect sunshiny girls getaway for a few days. So quiet, peaceful, private deck to have morning coffee overlooking the lagoon. Marjorie's place was exactly what I was looking for. It's quiet and peaceful. Another one. We really enjoyed staying at your house as it fit perfectly with our plans. We have really enjoyed our stay the past two times and are looking forward to visiting again. Well, unfortunately for Kelly, we probably won't be accommodating her or any other of our great guests anymore. You see, I will not be fighting any fights to keep my business. My daughter is graduating, and luckily for me, I have a job. But for others, this income is probably the difference between staying in their homes because the extra income pays their taxes. I have been a landlord before elsewhere and have walked into my home after people have rented for years, and what I saw was abhorrent. I would never consider renting my space to anyone ever again. With short stay, I never have anyone for more than six to seven days. Most are here for two to three. I can get back in and make sure everything is okay. I have insurance from Airbnb. I pay income taxes to Airbnb. I get a ten ninety-nine, and the guests are paying taxes to stay there. Airbnb is worldwide, so all you are managing to do is take Lacy off the world map of places to stay in this town that already has a lack of overnight accommodations. But you know all this, and you will do what you will do. I just wanted to say, it is disgraceful to hear that you will be limiting places for your friends, neighbors, guests, and tourists to come right in the middle of two beaches in the state of New Jersey. I'm scratching my head over the decision to make this zoning against short stay, and I urge you to look into the problems that may have arisen. Unfortunately, there may have been a few outliers. I would encourage you to take them on a case-by-case basis rather than take a big broom and sweep the good out with the bad. You have a job to do, and sometimes it's not easy to distinguish what is good or bad for your town. I assure you, my small business has been an asset to Lacy and its other small business owners, as I have had upwards of one hundred people staying in my space each year, all of whom like things like pizza and places like Captain's Inn a lot. In conclusion, I will continue to have my guests that are booked through this year, and I will be closing down after January first because I will not share my income with anyone else. I'm not sure if your aim here is to put fees on the business or sanctions of any other kind, but even so, I'm not interested in playing unless, of course, you would like to come over and help me vacuum and clean the bathrooms every few days. I work hard, and again, this is a real shame for a lot of people on both sides who have really benefited from the entrepreneurial spirit of the Airbnb. I believe your actions are not only un-American, maybe illegal, but are also unacceptable way to appease a few people who don't know what Airbnb is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address for record, please.
I, Valerie Dixon, eight fourteen Tappan Street. I'm also here tonight on behalf of the Nexus Association of Realtors. I'm here to express our concerns with and opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen prohibiting short-term rentals in Lacy. The Nexus Association of Realtors have several concerns with ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, specifically regarding the effects it will have on private property rights of homeowners in Lacy. As you know, under this ordinance, the residents of Lacy are prohibited from renting out their homes for a period of less than thirty days, a practice many residents of New Jersey engage in when they are not in their homes, especially given the high cost of living in New Jersey. Allowing the residents of Lacy to rent out their homes on a short-term basis may help them to afford to stay in their homes given the high cost of living in New Jersey. In addition, adopting this ordinance could have other unintended consequences, such as lower property values and a loss of tax revenue for the town. We are also concerned with the specific provisions of ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, given that Lacy Township is in Ocean County and not geographically far from the Jersey Shore. It's not unrealistic to think that there might be families who look to rent a home here if it's slightly more affordable. Those families could then also spend money in Lacy in restaurants or stores in town contributing to the local economy. Enacting this ordinance could have a negative effect, not just for Lacy residents looking to rent their home, but also on the local economy as an unintended consequence. Having said that, we are aware that there have been situations occurring at specific short-term rental where there have been multiple complaints. The Nexus Association believes that there is a weight in. The Nexus Association believes that there is a way to ensure the safety and quality of life in residential neighborhoods in Lacey without stopping the residents here from being able to rent out their home. We recommend that rather than adopting this ordinance, which punishes all homeowners in Lacey for the actions of a few, the town council could consider an alternative, creating a registration system for short-term rentals and a three-strikes policy, where if there have been three substantiated complaints against a home, it would no longer be allowed to be rented on a short-term basis. The Nexus Association does not believe all homeowners in Lacey should be punished for the actions of one or a few properties, as this would also prevent future Lacey residents who wish to rent their home on a short-term basis from doing so. The Nexus Association of Realtors is also supportive of two other ordinances being considered tonight, twenty nineteen dash seventeen and twenty nineteen dash eighteen, that could also be used to address short-term rental properties where there have been multiple complaints. For these reasons, we ask that the council not approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen and instead consider other options that would hold only those responsible for quality of life or other violations relating to short-term rentals by regulating rather than banning short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Oh, we have somebody.
No, I'm sorry.
Come on down. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Dr. Lee Shugel, sixteen sixteen Beach Boulevard. And first of all, I want to thank you all for making this transparent to everybody. I've been renting out my property occasionally on Airbnb. I've had nothing but great experiences in it. The people that have rented from us have had great experiences and really enjoyed Lacey Township. There are things inside of Airbnb which generally ensure that the client who's renting your property is going to behave themselves, otherwise they'll never have another opportunity to rent again. In the four or five years that I've been doing this, I've never had an issue with any of my neighbors. That being said, I do understand the importance of everybody living in a community where they're not bothered by rowdy folks or people that don't follow normal mores. So I just like to express that I am against the two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen sixteen ordinance, two thousand nineteen eighteen. And I would be for the ordinance that is two thousand nineteen seventeen, where if there is somebody who is consistently having complaints in their Airbnb or in their rental unit, that there would be ways to address that. So I want to be respectful for all our neighbors, but yet I want to have the American right to rent my property out and pay for my kids' college as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Yes, Regina. State your name and address for record, please.
Regina descends, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I've used Airbnb in other cities, and it's a very worthwhile service. And I think shutting everyone down for the sake of a few, um, the young lady had an idea, the three-strikes-you-out policy, and that you just shut people down instead of shutting everyone out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir.
I'm Ted Motters, I live in Stephanie Court, toward the river. And I, I am for the ordinance, because I feel that this is a residential area. There shouldn't be people moving in next to you that you don't know. Did they do background checks? Didn't they do background checks? I just don't know. I used to have a friend that lived in another town, and they used to bring air mattresses in when they rented a town. Sometimes you have a group of people there you don't even know, and you complain about it. I just don't want strangers living next door to me that I don't know. If you have kids walking around, this and that, who do you know that was renting? Now, are they renting for a day, two days, and they're gone? They could break into your home and take off. I'd rather know my neighbors than have strangers there. Thank you.
Where was your address again? Sorry, I missed that.
Seven oh seven Stephanie Court.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come on down.
All right, I understand.
Call them on the record. State your name and address for the record.
Bill Fager, eleven hundred Orlando Drive. Okay? Been through this whole thing before. Eleven oh two Orlando Drive was bought by whatever. And this whole summer has been ruined for us with eighteen-plus guests every weekend. We've done over this, okay? And I'm really, everybody is kind of done with this whole thing. The whole neighborhood is done. It's different people every weekend, twenty cars parked in front of the house. I understand some people may do the right thing, and that's fine. But from what's happening, if we allow us to go on, it's going to get worse and worse because I know that the people that bought the house next to me have bought three other houses, and it's going to continue. Okay, and that's, you know, I appreciate everything you guys have done, and I think you're moving in the right direction, and I just wanted to say thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else, I think, these gentlemen over here? I'll get to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Mark, Langford, seven twelve Maple Road, Lenoka Harbor. Listen, I hear people talk, realtors, people that are in business, they do this, right? I understand their point, but just like the gentleman said before, I mean, you know, when you're a homeowner, you come to this town, you come into a cul-de-sac, you raise your kids, you're doing nice things. People are talking about money, okay? I don't care how people look at it. It's about money. You're buying a home to make money. Don't get this alone about people coming into a neighborhood because they feel like, let's say, I'm going to come into their neighborhood and I'm going to try to pay my bills, I'm doing this. You do that in other places. There's places you could do it for. People are too scared to come up here and talk. You know, you hear people that are professionals, you hear people that know how to speak in front of people very well. I even not speak as well as a lot of people, but they're professionals. They're used to this type of situation. People are too scared to come here, Lacey. I know a lot of people feel the way I feel. And they're too scared to come up here because it's scary, you know, you guys are up here and you're here as a citizen. So the way I look at it, you know, think about the people that can't talk up here, that are regular people, like me. They pay good taxes, they pay more, like I said last meeting, than the average person in my neighborhood. I'm paying more for cul-de-sac, I'm paying more for sidewalks, I'm paying more for safe. I love my neighbors. I get along with my neighbors great. We all know everybody. I mean, we have neighbors that watch each other. We had kids come to a cul-de-sac, we were Eastmont time. We notify each other, boom, we're done. We don't have that. We have no privacy. It's been okay now, but here's the problem. It doesn't get better. I don't care what anybody says. It's about money. People want to make money, go to Seaside, go to, go to Kate and A, go to wherever you want to do. But in a, a small community, you know, you don't want, listen, there was a lady supposed to come tonight, and she's too scared to come. One of my neighbors, I'm not going to mention her name. And she said, someone come up to her and ask her for ketchup, okay? She's got two beautiful daughters. She's asking for ketchup. And she says, what? Well, I live across the street, and I wanted some. I didn't know. You guys are all renting, do you have any ketchup? She's like, this ain't a rent. I live here. I mean, why are you coming to my house? She got scared, you know. She's sitting there as a homeowner, and someone's asking for ketchup. Now, again, there's two sides to stories. Sometimes it's working out great, but I'm right now, okay? I'm concerned, I'm putting it out here, as a regular guy, plain Jane guy, you know, it's something to think about. It's a tough, you know, I know you're putting down some pretty good regulations, and I appreciate it, but maybe you should look a little forward into, before this thing gets sizeable and delivered. I don't know if it is already because I came late, but you really got to, we got to look into this a little bit better. That's just my opinion. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Journey Price. I'm also at seven ten Maple Road, Lenoka Harbor. And I'm so thankful that you put this ordinance ahead and put it out there because I agree with you. It's all about the mighty dollar and not about the quality of life. We have a VBR, we have strangers coming in, we have multiple children in our neighborhood, and there are strange people coming in and out every three days. It's changed the climate and culture of our, our community, our small little community in our neighborhood. We don't know if these are sex offenders. There says in the VBR that there's no dogs, but there are dogs that are showing up running loose. We all have to have our dogs in our town licensed, and they have to be tied up. So I know it's affecting my quality of life. I don't like not knowing who my neighbors are. I grew up in this town. The town has changed and evolved over, and it's still that nice, strong community. And I just feel that it's a business. I'm in a residential area. People should not be allowed to run a business. They're not allowed to run, you know, lawn service out of their house. They're not allowed to... Why are they allowed to run a motel in my residential neighborhood? So that is my concern. I know it's affected me personally and my family and people coming in, because it's just not safe. I just, I don't want to live next door to you. I appreciate your leadership, and I emailed you, you know, the New Jersey State Department ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm accomplishing that. We live in a great town. We'll keep it that way and try to find happy balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else in the public? Was to speak on, what is it?
Ordinance sixteen.
Ordinance sixteen. Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion on the ordinance.
Motion on the ordinance?
Motion to the commander.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Okay, second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen, creating chapter two forty-three, nuisances.
In order to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, creating chapter two forty-three of the township code of the township of Lacey, which shall be entitled nuisances. This again is a part of, you know, the other two ordinances that we are adopting here. And this is relating to nuisances and properties located in the township where nuisances exist and other activities occur which have resulted in excessive consumption of municipal services. Relating directly to these nuisance properties, there should be, be paid by the property owner if they are found guilty of excessive use. And there is, I do believe, all of you might, if you've read it online, definitions of what nuisances are, the statuses of them, what qualifies as a nuisance, and the fees for such, and the agency that will be enforcing it, which is the township of Lacey and a number of their officials, how you go about reporting it, and the determination of what an excessive noose is, the notice and requirements to notice those that violate the ordinance, and the process for our hearings and procedures and costs to be assessed against those. A second reading. Anyone have any public comments?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash eighteen, creating chapter two seventy-eight, rental regulations.
In order to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, creating chapter two seventy-eight of the township code of the township of Lacey, which shall be entitled rental regulations. This is a companion bill to sixteen. This is with regards to rental regulations so as to create the article one, which should be entitled bonding requirements for repeated improper conduct. It outlines purposes, definitions, and complaints and hearings, and those, how you go about noticing somebody who is violating it, what the hearing procedure is, proceedings against the landlord, and the forfeiture of a security deposit in such. Second reading. Open the floor to any public comments.
Motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen, amending chapter three twenty-three, vehicles and traffic.
In order to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, revising chapter three twenty-three of the township code of the township of Lacey entitled vehicles and traffic. This is to put in a provision at section three twenty-three dash eight related to parking. Regulation is not exclusive. The provisions of this chapter imposing a time limit on parking shall not relieve any person of the duty to observe other more restrictive provisions of prohibiting or limiting the stopping or standing or parking of vehicles as set forth in New Jersey Administrative Code thirty-nine colon four dash one thirty-eight or New Jersey Administrative Code thirty-nine colon four dash fifty-six point five or any other New Jersey statute. Basically, to put, to define this, it's a vehicle that sits in a roadway for forty-eight hours and does not move at all. You know, it's registered, it's insured, because you cannot have a vehicle on the road without it being registered and insured. But if it's going to sit there and they're going to use it basically for storage, it's in violation of the New Jersey, New Jersey statutes, and it can be removed, and the individual would have to pay fees to get it out of impound. Second reading. Anyone have any public comments?
Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Call aside in shorts, seven oh five Tampa Road. I'm not clear on the ordinance. I'm for the ordinance. But the seventy-two-hour abandoned vehicle ordinance, when I have police officers come out to the cars that have been parked there for four months now, they say all they have to do is move them an inch forward or an inch back, and they can stay. Is this going to be the same thing?
That's basically what it is, yes.
Yes.
And you can't chalk the tires or anything like that to say whether or not was the vehicle moved or not, yeah.
So is this new ordinance going to address that? Because these, I have three vehicles in front of my house that have been there all summer. The offender that we all know purchased a new vehicle, so now there's another car in front of my house and two trucks. They've been there, the car's been there for a month, and the trucks have been there for four months without moving an inch. But the police officers won't do anything because they say all they have to do is move it an inch forward or an inch backward, and that's it. So is this new ordinance going to address that, where they are going to...
It's moving us forward to dealing with the situation down there, so one step at a time.
One step at a time, so there's still nothing I can do to get these cars removed from the windshield in front of my house?
No, but again, if he fails to move them, and you get to hour forty-nine, you know, I, I mean, the vehicle can be removed. I, I mean...
Because what he does is he plays musical cars. So he'll move one, and then move the other one up, then he'll go around and move that one behind it. So they're always going to be there.
Yeah, without, unless we put in no parking on the street, you know, so even if you were to have guests and you couldn't have enough, you know, parking in your own property, your guests wouldn't be allowed to park in the street at all either to do that on, you know, in that area.
I know, because the Sandy Hook residents, their guests park on our street now. Which I don't mind because they're only there for a day. But this guy's been there for four months, and he's not moving them.
We're all, we're all aware of the situation down there.
So this ordinance...
Delete everything that we can. This is an ordinance. Get one more step forward, and...
So if I call the police tomorrow, they're going to come out and tell me the same thing?
Unless you conclude the cars haven't been moved in forty-eight hours.
Well, they know. They drive up and down the street.
Well, you have to prove to them the car has not been moved in forty-eight hours, and then they will take the appropriate act.
Okay.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of block sixteen thirty-three, lot three.
In order to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing acquisition of an easement on portions of block sixteen thirty-three, lot three, from Barbara Smith in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash five A one. As you know, for many years, the township has been working on acquiring easements and property in order to put a traffic light up at Haynes Street and Lake Barnegat Drive. This is just another step in moving forward to acquire site triangle easement that we need, and we're acquiring the property from the adjoining property owner. Second reading, motion, open the floor to public comment. Any comments?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two seventy-seven, awarding a contract to Swift and Son Incorporated for Railroad Avenue Extension Phase Two.
Resolution to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Swift and Son Incorporated for the Railroad Avenue Extension Phase Two project. This is to complete the Railroad Avenue Extension that runs behind Home Depot. We will complete it up to Musket at this point, and the continuation of the Barnegat Trail. We opened bids on Tuesday. Four bids were received. Swift and Son was the lowest bidder at seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand fourteen dollars. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Crotola?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two seventy-eight, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one sixty-five, lot one point zero two, for property maintenance.
Resolution to township Lacey County, motion state of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal and debris cleaning up of the property located at nine oh six Beach Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costing the amount of a hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Motion, please?
Move it. Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crotolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-279, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crotolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-280, authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,276,961.76.
Move it. Move it. Second.
Mr. Crotolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion to approve township...
Now, can you do this?
Oh, abstain on D0400. Motion to approve township meeting minutes on September 26, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes on September 26, 2019.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for the Loyal Order of the Moose, Lacy Lodge 1907.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have an add-on. Can I do that? Okay, it's a resolution. It's 281. Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing amendment of an interlocal services agreement with the Lacy Township Board of Education for the use of various television equipment. We had agreed to earlier this year and had made provisions in our budget to increase the money that we pay to WLTS Channel 21 from $15,000 to $18,000, and this is just memorializing that change.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crotolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Got it?
Yeah, that's it.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. As you're all aware, we've made a number of ordinance changes regarding property maintenance and nuisance homeowners. I will say that for as long as I've been on the committee, one of the biggest problems we have in township is basically, I'll call them neighbor disputes or just being a bad neighbor. They're very, very difficult to clean up and enforce. And for, I would say, for every one person doing what they're supposed to do, there's probably 10 others that aren't. And that's, and they really affect the quality of life of the people that have to deal with problem neighbors. So that's why we pass what we pass. It's still very difficult to enforce them, but we try our best. Also this week, we had a school board liaison meeting, and I want to report that they've made a number of security upgrades to their facilities this year. They've put a real focus on improving the security of who's coming into and out of all the school buildings, so I want to applaud them for that. And finally, our note from DPW, the LEAP collection will begin soon. Tuesday, November 12th is the first cycle, so if you're going to have your bags out for the town, make sure they are in bags and not just blown out to the curb. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committeeman Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to say other than Lacy Township, as you've seen, the people that were here, you've seen the police officers that were sworn in. That's a great thing when we're able to do things like that because coming from a police family, having a mother and father, and my mother being the first woman chief in the state of New Jersey, that makes me proud. And my mom made me very proud to have that done. So to see that, I just want to congratulate them on the TV so everybody knows what good job they're going to do and what force they're going to. Other than that, I'd like to thank all the volunteers in town, all the employees in town, everybody that makes Lacy Township great. On my final note, I have a friend here also, it's in the audience, Donna McAvoy, which is a teacher. I'm going to say something about Lacy Township. I have a daughter that goes to Caldwell University. She's doing her bachelor's degree. And why I'm bringing this up, of what Lacy Township brings out to students and career things. My daughter was just asked by Caldwell University to be on the board to select a new administrator for the school, like a principal type, which is a great honor. And I told my daughter, I said, you know, I'm going to mention it. She said, Daddy, don't mention it. And I said, no, that's what we bring out of Lacy Township. And not because it's my daughter, just everybody that comes out of Lacy and moves forward. And that was an honor to get that phone call to say she's going to be on the committee of five to select a new president for that university. So that was a real honor. That's all I have, Mayor. And my daughter's going to kill me, I know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Committeeman Juliano, congratulations. Committeeman Dykoff?
I want to echo what Deputy Mayor Kennas said about the ordinances that we passed tonight. We do it with a lot of thoughtfulness, and we can't make everybody happy. And anyone who pays attention to the government realizes that, you know. It's hard to micromanage when we do an ordinance, but these are complaints that we take very seriously and, you know, it's very hard now to police it. And the more we micromanage it, the harder it would be to police it. So we think that these are a good first step. As the mayor had said before and we discussed it, we don't get it right the first time, well, you know, we can massage it. But we felt that it was necessary to move in this direction for the benefit of the township and the quality of life. And I'm glad that hopefully we can, you know, start making it a little better next year. Thanks very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Committeeman Crotolo?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo some of the same sentiments as well. Government's a difficult thing, and when you do get into neighbor-on-neighbor issues, it's not easy. I think we saw some democracy at work here today. I think we saw people who came in the last two, three meetings, voiced their opinion, had some concerns. We passed what we passed. We had some conversation in the back and we came out here as a united front. So there's always issues like this. We can always visit these items. And we want our residents, who are our neighbors and our friends and our colleagues and our coworkers, to come up through those doors and feel, I mean, one of the gentlemen right here, he had said some people don't feel that comfortable. A lot of people in town have my cellphone, have a lot of folks' cellphones numbers. If you don't feel comfortable coming up to the microphone, I just ask you as a neighbor, as a person who I see in ShopRite or another store, call 693-1100. You know, nobody is going to fault you for that. And if you have a question, we have some great department heads and employees, answer your question. And if they don't, maybe I can. But if we don't have the answer, we'll get the answer for you. So if you don't feel comfortable coming up to the microphone, and no one should, please call 693-1100 if you have something you want to talk about. That's what it's there for. I want to thank everyone for a great Lacy Day experience. I think Mayor had mentioned that there was like 2,600 people. Our businesses were out there and we had our neighbors out there, we had our historical society out there. Just amazing weather. It just seems to grow and get better and better every year, and we just, we love that sense. God bless you. I hope my colleague Committeeman Dykoff is in a giving mood tonight. I really don't want, don't want anything.
Share.
But I digress.
You saved that during my comments? I didn't sneeze during...
I'm sorry.
We kid because we care. Get along with Mark.
I kid.
So I wanted to thank everybody for coming out. I wanted to say thank you also to the folks at Seabreeze, the good folks over there. We went out there and we answered some questions. And I wanted to just recognize that, you know, we're allowed to go over there and speak with them. The folk, the five folks that are up here and Veronica included, will come out to your civic organization as well. You call 693-1100, you want a speaker. We've had Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts in here. We show them how we make an ordinance. We let them use the gavel. That's what this is about. We're occupying these seats and then we want the next group of people to come up. And that's the way you should look at it because long after I'm gone, the seat will be here. So I want people to know that that's there and that's available. And in closing, people know a lot of what I do is alcohol and drug prevention. I'll speak at the high school anytime they let me. I love getting behind a microphone over there. I was at Exit 100 today at Jersey Shore University Hospital with a lot of folks in the legislature. One of them was Herb Conway, who's a medical doctor. There's a hyper-focus on vaping now and I think way past the local level. You have so many young kids doing that now. There are very few regulations. A lot of folks have questions about what's in some of those mixes. So way past us, again, everybody has the right to do business and try to make a living. And I am certainly just bringing you the information of what I observed today. And what I observed today is you'll probably see some legislation coming out against vaping in New Jersey. You already saw some specifically in Illinois. And if it helps protect our kids and other people, because some of that stuff is marketed towards kids. When you have flavors like bubble gum, cotton candy, and strawberry marshmallow, then maybe, you know, the legislature's going to take it up, the lower house and the upper house, the senate. I think they're going to take it up. So I just bring you that in passing. That was not any of my opinion, a lot of my observation of what I saw this afternoon. So with that, Mayor, thank you for your comments and thank you for your time.
Mayor, can I just say one more thing before you... You also can dance pretty good, too.
I had the...
Italian-American.
Yeah, the Italian-American club.
And you did dance.
I went there and the folks, because, maybe because I'm Italian, I refer to myself as American Italian. It knocks some Italians the wrong way, but I like being American first and Italian. So I just can't help that. That's the cloth I'm cut from, you know, I'm sorry. If I lose the Italian vote, I, if I lose the Italian vote, it's pretty bad, Nick. So, but I hope I get that support, but I did try to sing.
That didn't work well.
It was pretty ugly.
Yeah, he sang, he danced. He did it all.
I sang, danced, and acknowledged our colleague Committeeman Juliano. So thank you. Thanks for remembering that.
Sorry, Mayor, that I...
Thank you.
Because you did text me that you were singing and I put my phone down. Oh, my God.
He never texted me back after.
No, you're absolutely right. Okay. First of all, I want to thank everybody who had comments regarding this Airbnb. This gentleman's absolutely right. It's not easy to get in front of that microphone and talk. So when we get that and we get both sides of the story, it's really good. So I do want to thank you all for coming out and expressing your concerns with that. And the hardest part of this job by far is trying to resolve neighbor disputes. It's almost impossible because the laws just aren't there to do it. And we got to be very careful on civil rights and things of this nature. So this is a step, and as I have said before, Committeeman Dykoff said it, if we don't get it right the first time, we'll get it right the second time. So we'll see where this all ends. Okay, does everyone know that Lacy Township now has its own YouTube channel, which is pretty good? We've got a company out of Barnegat to do all the videos and stuff, and there's some good videos on there. And we are getting ready for our 150th anniversary, which is in 2021. So we'll be publicizing that, we're using the YouTube channel to publicize that and get the word out. Lacy Day was fantastic. Since we moved it to the last Saturday in September about three years ago, four years ago, I don't know, for some reason, the weather's just been unbelievable. We had about 2,400 people there. The historical society had their Apple Festival inside Lacy Day, and they have sold out for the third or fourth straight year, all their pies and stuff like that. So it's just a wonderful day, you know. We get out there and you get to see people that you maybe see once a year, and you stand there and talk, and that's what it's all about. The last thing I want to talk about is, at Lacy Day was the very next day, or the Monday, we started tearing down the playground there because it's been since 1996, is that right?
That's correct.
1996 when we opened that up. And I don't know, about a million, two million kids have played on that thing? Okay, so it's got its worth. It doesn't owe us a dime. So I just want to show you, this is a rendering, and this will go there, and hopefully this will be opened up next spring sometime, okay? Now, what we're going to do, how many of you have been down to Bayfront Park with that blue padding there? We're going to put that on this, okay? But we're not going to square it off because we've got plenty of room. So we're going to be able to save a little bit of money by shaping it in such a way. And I don't know, we've got blue down at Bayfront, I don't know what color we're going to put up there. But this is what it's going to look like. So anybody, the kids complain that there's no playground in Billy Park, tell them, come back in June. We'll be just, they'll just be fine with that. And that's all I have. So comments from the public tonight?
Hi, good evening. My name is Albert Ingenito. I'm at 129 Oakwood Place in Fort River, New Jersey. I just have a few things that I'd like to discuss this evening. And the first one is, I want to acknowledge and compliment the Public Works Department, Road Department, for the installation of a storm sore that was sorely needed on our street. It started in the summer of 2018. It started in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. A neighbor was dispersing water for all spaces here. And it took a year, but it got done. And again, I just want to thank them for the job of them.
Relay that to them.
They're going to get a car. In any case, if you want to do it, it's up to you. But the other thing, a couple of other things I want to mention. Have we heard anything on Route Nine, the DOT, or they continue the paving of Route Nine?